Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would like our Cub Scouts from 661 to lead us in the pledge. Can you all come up here for us? Here's your flag, guys. Scott Slute.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call and roll.
Councilmember Erby, here. Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger, here. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Jolins.
Here.
Councilmember Trachis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a form. I move for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of February 21st, 2017.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. February 17th, 2017, Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to Communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so we'll move to road and bridge matters. Under Road and Bridge Matters, Item Number 1, 4th District.
Received, filed, planned specification, and detailed estimate of cost be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as recommended.
Through a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, Mr. Chair. Item Number 1.
Received and filed, and that will be the order.
Item Number 2, 6th District.
Received, filed, and refer the Department of Transportation, Department of Public Works, and Department of Planning into the County Council.
So ordered.
Item Number 3, 3rd District. Received and filed, please.
So ordered.
Item Number 4, 2nd District.
Received and filed, and that will be the order.
Item Number 5, 5th District.
Received, filed, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number 6, all districts.
Received and filed, and that will be the order.
Item Number 7.
Received, filed, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through Item Number 10.
Item Number 11, 7th District.
Received, filed, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
And that will be the order. Add-ons?
Item Number 1, 3rd District.
Received, filed, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
For the 3rd District? That's fine.
My mistake, sorry.
So ordered.
Item Number 1, 3rd District. Are we repeating it?
Yeah.
Received, filed, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item Number 2?
Just a second, Mr. Chair.
Do you need a... Okay.
Excuse me.
You want to change the... You want to modify your motion?
Received, filed, and the Administrator Director be directed to hold a public hearing on the Green Trails Community Improvement District proposed in the petition no later than 45 days from the date in accordance with the Cid Act.
So ordered.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Item Number 2, 4th District.
Received, filed, and the change of order be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 3, 6th District.
Now, um, received, filed, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. I apologize, Mr. Chair.
So ordered. Thank you. Um, held the forum.
We have eight speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
So...
Did you really tell them their name?
Yes. I didn't know if you had another... You were trying to add something?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have eight speakers tonight. Please come forward and give your name and address. Address your comments to the Chair. And we allow everyone to speak for three minutes, so at the end of your three minutes you'll get a reminder. First speaker.
Jones Deska.
My name's Jones Deska. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Council. I'm speaking in regards to the Cliff Cave Trail Expansion. Some of the concerns that the citizens directly that are impacted by this project. I don't feel that the trail's a bad idea. I feel some of the design elements of the trail need to be looked at closer. Number one being an entrance from Cliff Cave Road, which is an extremely dangerous, winding, curvy road that has no shoulder, that has no connecting sidewalk system. That would be the one entrance along with New England Town. Those two, both of them are residential streets that fit one entrance to that park. There's one entrance in and one entrance out. The second issue I have, it's a heritage park, a natural heritage park. I am not sure how much landscaping and trees and things they're taking down and concrete they're adding to this park. I think it's probably more than 5%, which is what the ordinance states. You can only do 5%. And it's a very delicate ecosystem back there with endangered bats that are beginning to nest now because of the warm weather, and they're downing these trees. The third is a parking lot at the end of the subdivision off of Cliff Cave and England Town with bathrooms. The... I questioned how they were going to connect the sewer lines, the bathrooms. We already have a crumbling infrastructure there that relies on a pumping station to keep things moving. Now, I have tried for the past year to meet with my former councilman, Kevin O'Leary. He wouldn't meet with me. I tried to meet with Gary Bass, the head of Parks, to discuss these issues. He refused to meet with me. I went to two meetings at the GRG. They finally met. Two people, a Megan Reichman and a Todd Anton, met with me, would not address any of these concerns, and very abruptly ended a very short five-minute meeting with Mrs. Deska. Change is tough. Move to Jefferson County. Um, I think the GRG is very dismissive of concerns and divisive when they advertise what they're going to do. They come, they drop a project in, and they leave with no regard to maintenance or any safety concerns. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Gwen McCary. Mr. Chair, can we ask the speaker to spell her last name, please?
Could you spell your last name for us, please?
M-C-C-O-N-Y.
Oh, N-Y?
N-Y. M-C-C-O-N-Y. My name is Gwen McCary, and I'm at 5776 New Castle. I'm part of New England Town, which maps to the Cliff Cave Park and the parking lot. And my biggest concern is the safety issues. And I think that's something that has been neglected to really take a top spotlight. I understand there's three components to this project. The first one is the GRG, which they plan the project, they take their money, and they walk. Business number two is the urban landscaping. They build the project, and then they walk. And now we have the third one, which is the parks. That's the third business. Right now, we are having problems with them addressing our current issues, and it only with the increase of the parking lot and the traffic that will happen, we feel like these problems are going to escalate. I have a paper here right now from the Melville/Oakville Police Fire Department. They have listed, in no particular order, the 10 most dangerous intersections in Oakville/Melville. We have four of them. Two, we have Telegraph, 255, Telegraph and Bombard, Telegraph and Herb, and Telegraph and Porter. So four out of 10 are all Telegraph. I can sit there and personally talk about Angie Hall, who was killed at age 14 crossing Cliff Cave and Telegraph several years ago on a Saturday night. We also know of a young man at St. Mary's who was at Southmore who was killed at Telegraph and Herb Road. We also know of a family who lost their only son and daughter who was killed on Mother's Day on Sunday on Telegraph. It's extremely dangerous. And like Jones said, we have one way in and one way out. Traffic is going to increase from Telegraph and Cliff Cave down to the park. There's one... There's no stop signs. There's not one stop sign. Yes, I understand they're planning on putting one at a three-way stop, but it's a speed... It's a racetrack. From New England Town, Telegraph, down straight into the park, there are two stop signs, but there's three four-way intersections there. We need more... We need more stop signs. For people who are traveling to Southmore Telegraph and going... Wanting to go to the park, they're going to cut through New England Town because from New England Town to Cliff Cave to come around, it's a mile and a half, and it's two major stop lights with congested traffic. Two plazas. Right now, Oakville's struggling. I mean, I don't know if anybody's been out there. It's a dumping run. I mean, there's nothing impressive over there. I look at 270 and out of... Absolutely gorgeous. What's going on? We're spending $6 million on a trail. Schools are failing. Traffic's increasing. Crime's increasing. Cliff Cave, in the last several years, we've had a murder-suicide, we've had a hanging, we've had children that have drowned, we have drugs back there. It's not being monitored. Gates are not being closed on time. There is just so much crime there, and I have proof right here. So thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
I apologize for that timer going off, Mr. Chair. Next speaker is Farah Khan Shigaw.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Citizens of St. Louis County. To my councilwoman Hazel Erby, greetings. I stand here today representing my city, portion of the 1st County District, the City of Wilson. As they may have already introduced me, my name is Farah Khan Shigaw. I am a registered voter and a very active citizen in my city and in my district. I stand here today because I'm excited. I stand here today because I'm proud to stand here with such great people of St. Louis County. And I'm here to let you know some things that are going on in my city that may not have gotten your ears or your attention. Young people mobilize across St. Louis City and across St. Louis County. We have organized and have become very active in the political process and becoming conscious of it. In doing so, we have built a prosperous block of voting, men and women, young and old, who love St. Louis County, who have high hopes for its future. We are involved in the government, police, and everyday community activities that aid in its development. By organizing, we have formed a Wilson Community Coalition. This coalition consists of residents, business owners, community institutions, nonprofit organizations, churches, and various government entities who are spearheading a complete redevelopment campaign. This campaign consists of very various areas that we have identified to be mandatory for a community to be thriving, especially in St. Louis County. Those areas consist of business development, technology development, education, youth empowerment, and healthcare, and as well as cultural arts. These campaigns are designed by the people of Wilson in a way to further mobilize other Weldonians and those surrounding us. We have begun outreach, educating, reforming, and rebuilding the city and its people. Any attempts to destabilize these efforts will be faced with severe resistance. We ask that this body treat us fairly. We ask that this body demonstrates true character in dealing with us. We ask that this body be honest about its intentions. In addition, we invite you to join us. We are not begging, or we're not backing down from such a heavy task. In closing, the people of Wilson hereby put St. Louis County officials on notice that we are rising. Wilson is making a comeback. We will triumph over corruption, we will triumph over mismanagement, and we will triumph over evil. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is George Schillinger.
Thank you. My name's George Schillinger. I live at 1 Christopher Bluff Court in Oakville. Been resident out there for 45 years. But I'm talking about the trail, and these ladies have expressed quite a bit of this unsafety issues that they're concerned about. I'm a professional civil engineer, and I think the whole project is very ill-conceived as far as access to it. And it has to do with the Telegraph and Herb area. Certainly, people are going to want to use that entrance and are going to come there with a car. And where are they going to park? On Telegraph? I'm not sure if it's prohibited now, but I would imagine, once people are parked there, it's going to be prohibited. So now they're going to park in Walgreens parking lot or the church there. And I think that's a real approach on business. Another issue is, uh, there has to be a difference in the topography from the cave area to the Telegraph Herb area of at least 80 to 100 feet. And that rise is going to be in a shorter distance than most trails are. That's my guess. Somebody's has to check it out. But, uh, people who are handicapped aren't going to be able to go up that hill. Probably a lot of people who drive a bike are not going to make it up. It ought to be so that people who are handicapped or have trouble riding the bike could enter the park from Telegraph and have a safe place up here to park. I appreciate your time. I have a little litter to councilman Trachis. I wonder if I can enter into the... Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Amanda Elliott.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Amanda Elliott. I live at 2101 Old Minery Row, St. Louis, Missouri, 63129. I'm also here in regards to Cliff Cave County Park expansion. As of right now, no one has provided a long-term plan for the park. The bottom trails currently have large cracks, and they're not maintained right now. Are we going to allow the top part to fall in disrepair, like the bottom portion? The cracks are large enough that I can't imagine someone in a wheelchair would easily get over them right now, the bottom portion. How long is it going to be before the safety and maintenance issues are addressed? There's constantly litter left in the park, and I know this because my husband and I, who are the ones going into the park regularly right now, we come out with trash bag after trash bag after trash bag filled with the litter from the park. And we still haven't made a dent in the litter that's there and that continues to be thrown there regularly. While we were cleaning up litter this past weekend, we saw the unmaintained bat boxes that had fallen to the ground and were just left there. Where is the respect for this nature in this quote "natural heritage park" unquote? Today, I watched them tear down the old trees that the endangered bats that are there prefer to roost in. I also watched construction workers doing that, throwing all their cigarette butts on the ground. Where is the respect for nature in our park? It's quite upsetting to me. And since these issues have not been addressed, that's why I'm against the park expansion. I don't get to see any long-term plans to address these maintenance, litter, safety, as the other residents have mentioned, or nature concerns. They've been disregarded for quite some time now. Please stop dismissing the concerns of the people that will have to deal with these every day. I live right by the park. I have to deal with these problems. And just because it doesn't affect you daily doesn't mean that those that currently face them daily should have to continue to be overlooked and placed by the wayside. Please stop writing us off. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Next speaker is Milton Rudy.
Hi, I'm Milton Rudy. I live on Susan Road in Oakville, right across from Cliff Cave Park. And I want to let you know, I love that park because I grew up next to it, went through the cave, used to go ice skating in there and do it the trails and down in the sinkholes. It's a great place, and I'm really thrilled about the addition there, what you're going to do. Now, I know there's been a lot of discussion, and you're moving forward, it's a done deal, but you're still having some discussions on, you know, maybe some modifications. So the reason I'm here is I just want to make sure that you have all your bases covered, you have all the information, because I haven't been part of the process. I'm here to discuss two issues, a public safety issue and a public relations issue. The first, the public safety issue, is at Herb and Telegraph Road entrance. Yesterday, I emailed each of one of you a report I got back from Missouri Highway Patrol Accident Division about the number of accidents that have occurred at the juncture of Herb and Telegraph Road since 2002. And if you saw that memo I sent to you, that comes to 204 accidents in that time. Last year alone, there were 20 accidents at that location with a couple of fatalities. So the idea that you're going to stress that even more by adding now bicyclists and pedestrians to an already dangerous situation, I think you need to consider... I hope you have that information already. You did your homework on this, but... And you're taking that into consideration, okay? So that's one point I wanted to make. The second one is in the public relations issue. The problems that you were creating for the businesses that are joined that vicinity because I emailed you again yesterday... No, excuse me, back in February 21st, the results of a study done by the Oakville Planning Commission back in 1998. And in that study, they say they knew that a park entrance was going to come there to Herb, you know, and Telegraph. However, they said there's no parking. And what we urge you to do is to go visit the businesses and see if you can get them to agree to partner with the county to allow public parking on their private business parking lots, okay? So, has this been done? Do you know? Now, I've talked to some of the businesses there, and nobody has received any kind of communication like that. In fact, the ones I talked to, in fact, said they came here to this County Council to get up and protest and complain about it. Now, it doesn't seem like they've been, you know, approached on it at all.
That's Mr. Chair.
So, what is happening? You are asking them to take on a contingent liability in their parking lots, you know, if there's any injury or something to take place on them. They and their insurance companies are at risk, you know, of being sued. You're asking them to sully their own business reputation by having to go out to people in the parking lot saying, "I'm sorry, sir, you can't park here. This is private parking for a business. It's not for the county park." And what kind of a taste does that leave in that person's mouth regarding that business right there? Not too good. So, I'm, uh, asking you to please... I hope you have considered these things. We're excited about it, but I'm saying, let's have a safe and happy inauguration of our new Cliff Cave Park. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Isora Liggins.
Good afternoon. My name is Isora Liggins, L-I-G-G-I-N-S. I live at 5320 Bemidale Road, St. Louis County. I'm here today. I won't take up too much time. I wanted to address Mr. Stanger. He's not in today, so I'll just have to probably come back. But I had sent emails to, um... Well, I had tried to send emails, and they were rejected. I must have had the wrong addresses. But hopefully, I could give these and maybe pass them on to the County Council. And, uh, I could probably speak more open next week when I come in. But I just wanted to say to the young men who stood up and pledged allegiance today, it's a good look when we see our young people stand up. And I think that if we review this information, hopefully liberty and justice will be for all. Thank you.
Thanks.
Final speaker is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, the 40-day-before-election campaign finance reports were due last week for the April 4th election, and I have seen nothing that reports the expenditures made by St. Louis County. The main expenditure would be the time spent working on a proposal by County Executive Stinger and others in his office. He has been working to promote the proposal since last October. In addition, the County Executive's office has made expenditures on material being handed out by his office, and it does not say who paid for it as the law requires. This is nothing new for Mr. Stinger. 2015, he sent out invitations to his golf tournament fundraiser, and it didn't say who paid for it. But it did give Mr. Stinger's email, so he was obviously spending county time working on his fundraiser. There is a mistaken belief that material deemed to be informational is exempt from reporting requirements or tax dollars can be spent to produce and distribute it. That is a complete myth. If there are any expenditures of tax dollars made on Proposition P, which violates the laws of this state, I will be taking the matter to the U.S. Attorney's Office. You might recall, a St. Louis councilor was removed from office by the feds and did time for violating election laws, though no public money was involved. Also, a former governor of Missouri pleaded guilty a few years ago in federal court for violating the campaign finance disclosure laws. He was given a suspended sentence. About 10 years ago in Wisconsin, the Assembly Speaker was found guilty of having his aides working on campaigns on state time. He had resigned from office, was fined $2,000, and sentenced to 15 months in prison. If St. Louis County makes further expenditures on Proposition P campaign, the same thing should happen to Steve Stinger. I'm not sure Mr. Stinger realizes the dangerous game he is playing. He has repeatedly violated the State Sunshine Law, repeatedly violated the County Charter, and is now violating the campaign finance disclosure law. He might want to consider the seriousness of his actions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Tom. Introduction bills.
Bill Number 50, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to accept a grant of up to $1,125,418 from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, appropriating the same for housing and supportive services, authorizing the County Executive to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 51, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to accept a grant of $326,001.73 from the Missouri Department of Transportation, appropriating same to support creation of a commercial motor vehicle enforcement unit by the Police Department, authorizing the County Executive to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 52, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with Clifton Larson Allen, LLP, to audit internal controls and processes of the Children's Service Fund for fiscal years 2015 and 2016. Bill Number 53, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to grant easement to Union Electric Company for installation and maintenance of an underground power supply and full-mounted transformer located in Simpson Park. Bill Number 54, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with Integrated Facility Services Incorporated for removal and replacement of the cooling towers at the Roos Administration Building, St. Louis County Public Works, Number 16-012-OC. Bill Number 55, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger, an ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the C2 Shopping District and the C8 Plan Commercial District, and approving the application and preliminary plans for development in the C8 Plan Commercial District of Attractive Land, subject to conditions, PC 43-16 Nolan Real Estate Interest LLC Easy Storage. Bill Number 56, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, ordinance approving the application and preliminary plans for the amended development in the C8 Plan Commercial District of Attractive Land, subject to conditions, PC 01-17 Select Mayfair Plaza LLC and Select Mayfair Plaza Outparcels LLC. Bill Number 57, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, an ordinance approving the application and preliminary plans for the amended development in the C8 Plan Commercial District of Attractive Land, subject to conditions, PC 02-17 Quick Trip Corporation Storage, Number 0639R. Bill Number 58, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the R5 Residence District and the C2 Shopping District as provided herein, PC 03-17 Quick Trip Corporation. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you.
Bill Number 26, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
I move to perfect Bill Number 26.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 26 is perfected.
Bill Number 41, introduced...
Bill Number 41, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to hold Bill Number 41.
So ordered. 41 is held.
Bill Number 44, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill Number 44.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 44 is perfected.
Bill Number 45, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill Number 45.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 45 is perfected.
Bill Number 46, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill Number 46.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 46 is perfected.
Bill Number 47, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill Number 47.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 47 is perfected.
Bill Number 48, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill Number 48.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 48 is perfected.
Bill Number 49, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect Bill Number 49.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 49 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill Number 116, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold Bill 116.
Bill Number 116 is held.
Bill Number 24, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to hold Bill Number 24.
Bill Number 24 is held.
Bill Number 42, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 42.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 42, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 42 is finally passed.
Bill Number 43, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 43.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 43, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 43 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair, we have two this evening. Resolution Number 1, introduced by Councilmembers Dolan and Trachis.
I move for adoption. Resolutions 1 and 2 are honorary recognition for two South County police officers.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Resolutions 1 and 2, there are seven ayes.
Resolutions 1 and 2 are adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Chair. Item Number 1, 6th District.
Hold on the order of business, please. So ordered.
Item Number 2, 6th District.
Proceed file in the county council, be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Second.
So ordered.
Item Number 3.
At this time, we will vote on the selection of a new county auditor. The council has been deliberating on this for some time. For the ordinance, the process is to call the roll and have each council member declare who they would like to vote for. Yes, sir. I thought we were doing paper ballots in private session. You have the option to request paper ballots. I request paper ballots for the board. Second?
Second.
Okay, so we'll do paper ballots. Mr. Chair, shouldn't we go into private session on this? We do not. We are not required to move in closed session for the final vote of this, so we won't be doing that. We will, because the vote is an open vote, and your vote is recorded as official business, you will be required to put your name on the ballot. These are not anonymous votes. Who said this is an open vote? Peter, would you like to talk about that? The ordinance requires that the vote either be made by roll call or, if requested, by paper ballot. But in any case, the tally of the votes have to be released to the public.
The tally of the votes.
Well, and how each member of the council voted. It's an open record. And Peter, why can't this be in closed session? The charter states that all regular meetings shall be open to the public. In the circumstance of a committee of the whole meeting, you can go into closed session. But this is a personnel matter. But it's also an open, regular meeting now. I appreciate the dialogue, but we're going to follow the ordinance. It's been enough confusion about what the process is, and the ordinance... The ordinance will follow the ordinance, and everybody's had a chance to read that. So mark your ballots, general collecting.
Pointing at District Order, Councilmember Erby voted for Mark Tucker. Councilmember Page voted for Mark Tucker. Councilmember Wassinger voted for Anessa Spring. Councilmember Rochelle Walton Gray voted for Mark Tucker. Councilmember Dolan voted for Anessa Spring. Councilmember Trachis voted for Mark Tucker. And Councilmember Harder voted for John Vogel. Mark Tucker has received three votes, Anessa Spring two votes, and John Vogel one vote.
Let's say that again.
Mark Tucker has received four votes, majority of the votes, Anessa Spring two votes, and John Vogel one vote.
By our ordinances and procedures, Mark Tucker will be our auditor and will be awarded that contract, which will expire on December 31, 2018. Thank you for your patience in a very complex process. Mr. Chairman, are background checks going to be done of the candidates? You can make your comments at the end. We moved on after this item of business. New business?
Under new business, we have two prepared orders this evening, Mr. Chair.
I move for adoption of orders Number 1 and 2.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Orders 1 and 2 are adopted.
Move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. We're adjourned.